Hello and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, May 26, 2020. My name is Kim Clark-Baskin and I am the Assistant City Clerk. With us today, we have our sign language interpreter, Nick Miller. The following is a list of legislation to be introduced by Pittsburgh City Council. Councilman Anthony Coghill presents Bill Number 358. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. for ongoing wetland monitoring and reporting in the nine-mile run for park in the amount not to exceed $29,000 through 2022. Bill Number 359. Resolution authorizing acceptance by the City of Pittsburgh of the dedication of certain property in the Smallman Street project in the Second Ward, Seventh Council District of the City of Pittsburgh for public highway purposes, and further accepting any grading, paving, lighting, curbing, traffic signals, street trees, and public utilities located therein, and fixing the width and position of the roadway and sidewalk thereof. Bill Number 360. Resolution vacating a portion of Smallman Street situated in the Second Ward, Seventh Council District. Councilwoman Deb Gross presents Bill Number 361. Resolution amending Resolution 394 of 2018 to clarify the appropriate neighborhood stabilization program reference. Bill Number 362. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for Duncan Street townhomes at 5308 through 5314 Duncan Street. Bill Number 363. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 52nd Street townhomes at 724 and 728 52nd Street. Bill Number 364. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for 39th Street homes at 204, 206, and 208 39th Street. Councilman Daniel Lavelle presents Bill Number 365. Resolution providing for further renewal by the Council of the City of Pittsburgh of a declaration of disaster emergency ratified by City Council on March 17, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for seven additional days, hereby making the declaration effective until June 2, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 366. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into access agreements with Collective Efforts, LLC, for two city-owned sites located at 700 Haron Avenue and 3300 Webster Avenue, to conduct a Phase II environmental assessment, and further authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to enter into any necessary agreement or agreements with Northside Industrial Development Company to document the terms of its use of the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency grant funds to cover the cost of the assessments. Bill Number 367. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210, acceptance of gifts to the City of the City Code, the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Tree of Life congregation of $200,000 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund. Councilwoman Erica Strausberger presents Bill Number 368. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, or the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance, to enter into a multi-year licensing agreement with Cyclomedia Technology, Inc. for the purposes of a poll inventory and audit specifically excuse me, sorry. Specifically for the purposes of streetlight and telecommunications attachment inventory in year one of the agreement, and for inventory of other telecommunications assets in subsequent years of the agreement, and providing the payment for the cost not to exceed $768,348.75. Council President Teresa Kelsmith presents Bill Number 369. Resolution authorizing the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to issue a request for proposal in search of qualifying organizations to complete a performance audit of contracts here between nonprofit organizations and the City of Pittsburgh. And Bill Number 370. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting an acting pay approval on behalf of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service for Adam Colco, per the acting pay policy revised in June 2018. That concludes the reading of the legislation for introduction. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning and welcome to Pittsburgh City Council's regular meeting for Tuesday, May 26. Council will continue to meet virtually on Tuesdays and Wednesdays until further notice. All meetings will be livestreamed on the City Channel's YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Here.
Mr. Coghill?
Here.
Ms. Gross?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mr. Lavelle?
Here.
Mr. O'Connor?
There.
Ms. Strausberger?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Here.
I am Members' President.
Thank you. As we join together from our remote locations, please rise with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence. I apologize. A pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, that moves us on to our next order of business, Proclamations. And I don't see any proclamations to be presented.
We have two. There's two to be.
There are, okay.
Mrs. Kelsmith presents Bill Number 371. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Saturday, May 23, 2020, to be Paul McKibben Day in the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 372. Be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Monday, June 1, 2020, to be Jasmine Nari Campus Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
So moved.
All in favor?
Hi.
Motion's approved. Okay. And now we'll move on to the presentation of papers. No registered speakers. We have no Registered Speakers Day for public comment. As a quick reminder, to register to speak for public comment at Council's regular and Standing Committee meetings, please call the City Clerk's office at 412-255-2138 before 9:00 a.m. the day of the meeting. After you've registered, you'll be given a telephone number and an access code to join the meetings for public comment. Comments may still be submitted to the City Clerk's office via their email at cityclerksoffice@pittsburghpa.gov by 4:30 p.m. on Mondays. The next order of business will be the presentation of papers. The next order of business will be the presentation of papers. I apologize. Trying to work from two different phones. Reverend Burgess, Chair of Urban Recreation.
No new papers.
Thank you, Reverend. Good morning. Councilman Colco, Chair of Public Works.
Morning, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 358. Resolution authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to enter into an agreement with the Civil and Environmental Consultants, Inc. for ongoing wetland monitoring and reporting in nine-mile run for park in the amount of $29,000 through 2022. Bill Number 359. Resolution authorizing acceptance by the City of the dedication of certain property in the Smallman Street project in the Second Ward, Seventh Council District for public highway purposes, and further accepting any grading, paving, lighting, curbing, traffic signals, street trees, and public utilities located therein, and fixing the width and position of the roadway and sidewalk thereof. Bill Number 360. Resolution vacating a certain portion of Smallman Street situated in the Second Ward, Seventh Council District.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number 361. Resolution amending Resolution 394, 2018, to clarify the appropriate neighborhood stabilization program reference. Bill Number 362. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for Duncan Street townhomes at 5308 and 5314 Duncan Street. 5308 through 5314 Duncan Street. Bill Number 363. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 52nd Street townhomes at 724 and 728 52nd Street. Bill Number 364. Resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's official sewer facilities plan for 39th Street homes at 204, 206, and 208 39th Street.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I think you have a waiver for Bill 361.
Yes, thank you so much for reading the number for me since my screen doesn't show me the bill numbers.
I think we're all going through the same thing, trying to work on multiple screens here.
Motion to waive the rules of council so that that bill can appear on tomorrow's agenda. That's Bill 361, I think.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman. And any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Hi.
Those opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
Good morning, Madam President.
Good morning. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Lavelle, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 365. Resolution providing for further renewal by the Council of the City of declaration of disaster emergency ratified by Council on March 17, 2020, to extend the effectiveness of the declaration for seven additional days, thereby making the declaration effective until June 2, in response to the ongoing public health emergency associated with the spread of the coronavirus. Bill Number 366. Resolution authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into access agreements with Collective Efforts, LLC, for two city-owned sites located at 700 Haron Avenue and 3300 Webster Avenue, to conduct a Phase II environmental assessment, and further authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Finance to enter into any necessary agreements with Northside Industrial Development Company to document the terms of this use of U.S. Environmental Protection Agency grant funds to cover the cost of these assessments. Bill Number 367. Resolution authorizing pursuant to Chapter 210 of the City Code, the mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to accept a donation from the Tree of Life congregation of $200,000 to be deposited into the Public Safety Support Trust Fund.
Madam President.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman.
Request to waive the rules of council so that Bill 365 can appear under final action today.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The bill will appear today at the end of today's meeting. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
And then we have Councilwoman Strausberger, Chair of Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Madam President.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 368. Resolution authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure, or the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance, to enter into a multi-year licensing agreement with Cyclomedia Technology, Inc. for the purposes of a poll inventory and audit specifically for the purpose of streetlight and telecommunications attachment inventory in year one of the agreement, and for inventory of other telecommunications assets in subsequent years of the agreement, and providing the payment of the cost not to exceed $768,346.75.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
I would like to make a motion to waive the rules of eight for this bill so that it appears on tomorrow's agenda.
Bill 368. Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
No new papers, Madam President.
Good morning, Councilman.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Kelsmith, myself, Chair of Hearings. I have, I don't know what I have because I can't see it. It looks like a resolution and request for proposal, but I can't see. Madam Clerk?
I got you. Council President Kelsmith presents Bill Number 369. Resolution authorizing the Director of, authorizing the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to issue a request for proposal in search of qualifying organizations to complete a performance audit of contracts between nonprofit organizations and the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Number 370. Communication from Kevin Paulus, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, submitting an acting pay approval on behalf of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service for Adam Colco for the acting pay policy revised in June of 2018.
Thank you. Do we need two separate motions here, right?
Yes. 370 would be received, file.
Okay, so can we have the first one? Do we have anything there? That's just being introduced, right? So, okay, can we have a motion to read, receive, and file?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Passes. We will now move on to unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before council? The next order of business is reports of committee for final action. Councilman Daniel Lavelle, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number 354. Report of Committee on Finance and Law for May 20, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 335. Resolution authorizing the mayor and the city solicitor to enter into a professional services agreement with the law firm of Motley Rice, LLC, as special legal counsel to, one, determine the economic impact that prescriptions or peores have had on the city and its residents, and, two, based on such evidence, to investigate, and if appropriate, to commence and prosecute litigations against manufacturers, distributors, insurance companies, and/or prescribers of prescription opiates, or damages to the City of Pittsburgh arising out of marketing, manufacturing, distribution, and/or prescribing of opiates. Bill Number 336. Resolution amending Resolution 183 to authorize and direct an incurring of non-electorial debt through the issuing of a series of general obligation refunding bonds of the city in the maximum aggregate amount of $161,250,000 by replacing the entirety of Resolution 183 with new language in order to conform to state and federal law. Bill Number 339. Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution Number 855, adopting and approving the 2012 capital budget by transferring a total of $70,669.69 from multiple projects within District 1 Neighborhood Needs to District 1 DPW projects.
You've heard the reading in the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam President, if I may.
Councilwoman.
Thank you. So I just wanted to thank the administration for responding this weekend over Memorial Day weekend. If you'll recall, last Wednesday, I was asking questions about what the amendments were on the bond refinancing bills. And then, as I kept reading the attachments more closely, I kept finding more amended language. I think the title of the bill is somewhat confusing. It isn't only to conform with state and federal laws. But the amendments, once the Director Paulus responded to me, do make sense to allow flexibility in allowing either bank purchase or public purchase. So there's kind of, the amended language gives the administration the option to either do a public offering, right? So where there's, you know, a kind of market for bond purchasing, or if they prefer, to do a bank offering. So offering it just to be owned by a single bank. I believe we've done this before. I believe, in my recollection, loose recollection, that our first refinancing that we did under Director Legar was a bank offering, and that's just my recollection. And so it just helped me to feel comfortable. But there are additional amendments, and they are attached, and everyone in the public can read them. They're attached to the bill and legislature. But they are not reflected in the title of that bill. But I'm comfortable with them and supportive today. So thank you to everyone for responding to my concerns.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? Seeing, I just want to thank you, Councilwoman, because you do always make sure that you have clarity before you vote. And so you made sure that we were all okay too. So thank you. And I do want to thank the administration because Kevin Paulus responded late last night.
I know. And I just want to apologize to Director Paulus for that. And I, you know, I wish I'd had my, I had my questions last week, but I failed to put him on the email string directly, and that was my fault.
Well, I'm glad you got the answers. So the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross? Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger?
Hi.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And now we move on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 355. Report of the Committee on Public Works for May 20, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 329. Resolution granting unto Summit Hospitality's 139 LLC their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintaining use of their own cost and expense, a new projecting sign at 947 Penn Avenue in the Second Ward, Sixth Council District. Bill Number 330. Resolution further amending and supplementing Resolution Number 316 for the preliminary design and final design services during construction and miscellaneous services for traffic signal installation of the South Side Signal Project, which was amended by Resolution 78 of 2020 to authorize a new total project cost but not to exceed $536,000. To be further amended with this resolution to account for an increase in federal funding where costs associated with the South Side Signals Project have been converted from 80% federal and 20% local split to 100% federally reimbursable. The total project cost remains the same, not to exceed $536,000. Bill Number 331. Resolution further amending Resolution Number 787, adopting and approving the 2018 capital budget and the 2018 City VG Grant Program and the 2018 through 2023 capital improvement program by increasing 18th Street signal updates by $39,055 to reflect the project now being 100% reimbursable by the Federal Highway Administration. Bill Number 337. Resolution authorizing the mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works and the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement between the City and James Simone for the creation and installation of public art at Townsend Park located at 803 Ernie Street, but at a cost not to exceed $8,000. Bill Number 344. Resolution vacating a portion of stopperway from Larrinmore Avenue southeasterly in average distance of 123.47 feet in the 12th Ward, 9th Council District.
You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? No discussion on the bills? The bills are ready for final action. All in favor of the passage will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess?
Aye.
Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross?
Aye.
Mr. Kraus?
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor?
Aye.
Ms. Strausberger?
Hi.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President?
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes or finally passed. And we move on to Councilwoman Erica Strausberger, Committee on Innovation, Performance, and Asset Management.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Strausberger presents Bill Number 353. 356. Report of the Committee on Performance and Assets Management for May 20, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number 350. Resolution authorizing the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an agreement with Cohine Law Group and CTC Technology and Energy for the renegotiation of the city's cable franchise agreements with Comcast and Verizon and certain additional telecommunications consultant services, and further providing final payments to the smart works partners for work provided under an agreement authorized by Resolution 741 and 748 of 2018.
You've heard the reading in the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bill? Is this the part for partner for work contract?
No.
No. Okay. So seeing no further discussion, seeing no discussion, the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Lavelle. Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith, President.
Aye.
Eyes nine, no zero.
The bills having received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. Now we move on to Councilwoman Deb Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Councilwoman Gross.
He's on mute. Councilwoman Gross presents Bill number 357, Report of the Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for May 20, 2020 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 332, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an intergovernmental corporation agreement with the County of Allegheny and Partner for Work for the shared operation and administration of the 2020 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program in an amount not to exceed $1,500,000. Bill number 333, Resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into an agreement with the Goodwill of Southwestern Pennsylvania for administrative services related to the 2020 Learn and Earn Summer Youth Employment Program at a cost not to exceed $227,374.26.
You've heard the reading of the title of bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing no discussion, I'm going to talk a little bit about the Learn and Earn Program. We had our council briefing. Pardon me? Is that Councilwoman Gross?
She disappeared.
Well, this is her committee, so I don't want to step on her toes. I'll talk until I hear her or see her.
Yeah, she froze, and then she kind of disappeared.
I know that she had some concerns with this as well, and I want to thank her for working with us on this in the clerk's office for scheduling a briefing and Janet Manuel, Director Manuel. I appreciate all that they've done. But I do want to say that I have a lot of concerns about, even after the briefing. I don't feel any, I don't feel reassured at all that we're reaching our kids. I know that this is a program that Reverend Burgess cares deeply about. I think we all care deeply about it. I know I attended the task force meetings when Reverend first introduced some legislation a couple of years ago. And back then, we talked about how we're making sure that this program is beneficial to students, not just a one-time thing, but there's actually some consistency so that we're not helping a child one year, the next year they fall through the cracks, because that's not a meaningful program. So we talked about that. And this year, when I heard that we are talking about doing this program through technology, and we know that there's an issue, there's a huge issue right now in Pittsburgh Public Schools, are students not having access to technology for their learning, for day-to-day learning. So it certainly is an issue now for, to build an entire summer program off of technology when our kids don't have computers. They just don't have it. There's just not enough to have based a program upon this. So I'm going to work with members, and maybe over the next week, add some amendments or some suggestions, maybe with the administration. I think there's a couple of things that's going to happen. One, we're going to watch the budget next year. So when this program comes up, we're going to make sure that it's funding the program in a way that's beneficial to the city of Pittsburgh residents and to our children in Pittsburgh. I think that there's a lot of people receiving help. I don't necessarily think that those people are the people that need help, because one of the ways that they even acquired the applications for the kids that they've accepted was through technology. And so if you don't have access to technology, those kids are not having a way to apply if they don't have a computer in their home. So I think that the whole, the whole, the whole thing needs revamped. And we should also be offering ways. There are kids with disabilities that cannot use computers, and that's why some of the kids took so long to get computer access for some of our kids. And, I mean, I noticed that Housing Authority has stepped up to the plate in their purchasing computers, which is really nice, but also begs to question why we're paying for something that our residents and taxpayers already paid for. They paid for our kids to have a great education. They pay a lot of money for our kids to have great education and to have all the tools that they need. Our teachers want to teach. There has to be some questions as to what's happening with the budget. I realize that we've all been hit locally, but we're affected because of entertainment and parking and taxes that we collect in different ways. I don't know what the issue is with the Pittsburgh Public Schools and why they don't have money to buy the computers right now, although I'd love to have that discussion with the administration and with some of the board members who I do work with on Pittsburgh Public Schools. So I think that's a conversation we have separately. But having said that, here we are using taxpayer money to buy computers again, when they should have been purchased already through Pittsburgh Public Schools, through the taxpayer dollars that they've already spent. But in general, there's a lot of kids that don't, that cannot use computers, that don't have access to computers. I think that the program should have thought of maybe programs in urban agriculture. That's a big thing now. A lot of people love that program. A lot of kids love that program. It'd be a great thing to teach them right now, especially with all that we're going through. And there's so many opportunities to teach kids those things. So I think it would be helpful if some of those organizations would apply to, to be a partner with this program. But I think that there's going to be a longer discussion, and I think that there'll be some changes. But I do think overall, we want to see real results. And to me, I feel like this program was really very short-sighted, that you're going to try to base its Summer Youth Employment Program on technology for kids in the city of Pittsburgh, where a lot of them do not have access to technology. I think it was beneficial to the organization. They're going to get a nice chunk of money. I think the organizations that are partnering with them are going to get some help. But I don't know how it helps the majority of our kids in the city of Pittsburgh. And I feel like it's very disappointing that anybody would have thought that this was okay. Any further discussion?
Well, I'll simply say one thing, Madam President, in that most cities have eliminated this somebody from the program. We're only one handful of cities in the country who are actually moving forward with trying to do something. And so this is maybe an example where, you know, the good, we're not allowing the good, the perfect to get in the way of the good. At the end of the day, I don't disagree with the things you've said. I will say this, as I've said before, we do service kids, and the most important thing, I think, the Summer Youth Employment process is really twofold. One, to show, at least the kids that are in the program, that they're valued by adults in a city. And second of all, it provides them with a chance to earn some money to do some really basic things like buying tennis shoes and buying school clothes, where some of them actually are coming from families where they can't afford it. And it gives them, many of them, their first opportunity to learn something that many of us, certainly me, was inculcated with as a child, that hard work pays off. And that in this country, when you work hard, you're rewarded for your efforts. And so, again, I do not think the program is perfect. I think this put a lot of time and energy into what we are doing. And I do think that we are going to have a positive summer experience for some of the, for the kids who are in the program. I am always saddened that we can't do all the kids. If it was up to me, you know, we would fund every kid, regardless of their eligibility requirements. We would fund every kid all the time. And we wouldn't just do this for summer. We would do it year-round. That would be what I would do if I was king of the world. But I am not. So we are going to do what we can do to the best of our ability at the moment, and we'll work with you, certainly, to make the changes for nature.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? I'm just going to say back to that. I think that I would love to help the kids too. Sadly, and unfortunately, we're missing the kids that probably need it the most, because they don't have access to technology. And, I mean, I think that we should have at least insisted that Partners for Work hand out the application, a hard copy application, to the Pittsburgh Public School students. I wish we could reach all students, because we represent kids no matter where they attend school, if they live in the city of Pittsburgh. So I wish we could find a way to maybe hand out the applications through the packets that they're handing out through the schools for education, because they're handing those packets out to kids that don't have technology. So at least we'd get a way to reach all the kids that maybe they don't have access to technology, or maybe they don't have access to somebody who can help them with the computer. So I just wish we would think about that, because I really think that, and at least insist on that this year, that they continue to work towards that, and that they do offer programs and not base the entire summer off of technology programs, that they realize that there are some kids, even if they have access to technology, that may have a disability where they cannot use technology. They just, I think we've got to think outside the box a little bit sometimes, instead of just taking the check and just saying, "We did a program." I think we've got to do it right.
Madam President? Madam President?
Yes, Councilwoman.
I'm back. I apologize, my computer, I don't know if you noticed.
No, no, we're frozen.
Crashed. I went away. I rebooted my whole computer. So I'm only just back, so I only just logged back on, so I completely missed what everyone discussed. But I hear that you're discussing the Learn and Earn legislation. And so if I, if you wouldn't mind, I'd like to just explain myself as well.
Please, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So, again, I don't, I don't know what other members have said or what you have said, but we were, have been talking about it since last week. And so you'll remember last week, I was asking kind of like what the portions of the 1.5, especially to the Partner for Work, is going to. And so thank you for setting up the briefings. We're able to drill down into those numbers a lot better. I wish it were different, and I wish we had more time to explore this. We're like now about to embark on summer. And, and what I said in the briefing, I think, is the best way I can explain my thinking, is that this year is just not like last year. Right? And while I've been supportive for the last couple of years, I think it's a wonderful goal of the program to provide work experience as well as the paycheck. This year is just not like all the other years. And hopefully, next year will not be like this year. But right now, I wish we could just give the, all the entire 1.5 directly to the households. That's me. Not everybody agrees with me, right? But I know we're all looking for ways to provide cash assistance to households that are in need in the city. We're working to try to provide cash assistance for rents, cash assistance for food, cash assistance for help with utilities, people struggling to meet their basic needs. And so I'm supportive of getting these dollars into people's hands and helping kids kind of get through the summer, because this, as other council members have very persuasively presented, these dollars help households get through into the next year. So, but that's not what these, this contract does. And so I wish we didn't have to do the same contract as last year. And so what the briefing explained to me is that about 10% of the 1.5 million comes off the top to Partners for Work for their connecting, which usually, I've said before, I can understand the added value, because they've added other kinds of employers and maybe given a better variety of experiences to the people in the program. But there aren't going to be those experiences this year, not really, being all remote. And so it's not entirely clear what the added value is. And then additionally, the remainder of that would be 1.35 million. And I thought, okay, in the briefing, I see that goes directly then to the household, the, you know, the students, participants. Well, no, they said only about 600,000 of the city's 1.5 goes directly to the student participants. The other 600,000 or 700,000 goes to the employers for their added value. But they sure, it's not really clear what that added value is. Right? Because they're not going to be housing those students and providing really the robust kind of work experience, which I'm okay with. But I'm, but still, it looks like this contract will go to those employers. And so I was explained, well, they still have to have their clearances to be safe to be working with students, underage people. They have to have technology upgrades to try to provide that remote work experience, which I'm just not clear is the best use of 600,000 or 700,000 dollars. And so while I support the movement of 1.5 million to go to students and their households, it's going through a bunch of intermediaries whose value is less clear, very much in question this year, as opposed to last year, or maybe even next year. So it seems like we're just doing the same contracts, even though these are not normal times. So this, we don't administer contracts, as Councilwoman Burgess has always clicked with behind us. So there may be still an opportunity, even though we're giving the authorization today. This is not the final version of the contract that will be in the administration's hands. So if you don't mind with your indulgence, I think it would be helpful to continue this, explore this idea with the administration of really, should we be doing last year's contract during this year's pandemic? So, thank you. But I'm going to vote yes today, because I am in favor of households getting that money. And, but let me qualify my comments. So the participants, the thousand or so students, we had, I think, 1,075 Pittsburgh students last year participate, did take home about $1,200, because our 600,000 was augmented by outside funds, which, again, the intermediary is helpful in putting together, but we could just be giving the 1.5 to the 1,000 households. So, you know, it's just, again, we're kind of, we're just questioning last year's model in this year's crisis. So I'll stop there.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Any further discussion? I just want to thank Reverend Burgess too, because I know that this has been a project that he's worked on a lot, and that it's something very close to his heart. And I do share this. I mean, I really want this program to be a wonderful program. But I do think now we're talking about, you know, stopping a lot of things. We're doing a lot of things in the city of Pittsburgh, cutting back and looking at budgets. And I just feel like sometimes, you know, maybe we can't sustain every organization in the city that comes to us. And maybe this is one of those times that maybe we should have rethought how we're partnering, what we're doing, who could have helped us do this program for maybe less money, or maybe more direct benefit to the students, and how we could actually reach kids that actually need it. Because although I think that it's great to make sure that the money goes into the pockets of the kids and that they're actually getting a benefit, I'm concerned, and because I think that there are people that do need help with rent, and we know a lot of students that help with rent and with household costs, I'm afraid that the money is not going to the kids that need it the most. So I do have a lot of concerns. But I do think that the idea is amazing. It's a great idea. I'm glad to see that we're continuing it. I just wish we would rethink it, which is also why I introduced the legislation. One of the reasons I introduced the legislation earlier today to talk about an audit of, a performance audit of all the nonprofit groups that we do work with in the city. And I think that seeing who actually is benefiting us and who's actually just benefiting, I think it would be, is going to be really interesting to see and look into. So with that said, the bills are ready for final action. Those in favor will vote aye when their name is called.